Counsel, if you could please sign in. All council members are present this evening, and I see that we have a scout in the back of the room. Young man, did you know that you have to come up front now? Uh-oh. There's the smile. Alright, come on down for us, because you're gonna lead us tonight in the most important part of tonight's meeting, which is the Pledge of Allegiance. So, audience, if you guys could please stand for me. Young man, what's your name?
Alexander.
Alexander. Okay, Alexander, I'm gonna turn around, we're all gonna turn around and face the flag. You're gonna be the lead, so when you're ready to go, everyone's gonna be listening for you to start the pledge, say it loud and proud, it's okay to use your outside voice, alright?
Please remember me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job, young man, way to go! Yes. Yeah, even did the intro, that is fantastic. So, I know we've got a wonderful camera in the back of the room, which is Facebook livestreaming this right now, right? We're streaming, so we're gonna do something that's kinda cool, is we're gonna do like a double stream right now. And that's this, I'm gonna Facebook livestream the next part of the meeting, but I have a favor to ask. If there's anyone in the room who's in the Witness Protection Program, this is the time to leave. It's really funny, when we were swearing in our police dog that first time, I said, "Yo, he's trained for narcotics, and he's gonna come in and do a demonstration," and I swear, a couple people in the room were like, "Uh-oh." You know, so, alright, you guys ready? Let's go live, hit the button, three, two, one, and we're live, alright. Hello, Parker, it's Mayor Mike Wade, it's 7:02 PM, I'm gonna switch the camera on here, so now it's out in the audience. If you look across the way, we're also Facebook livestreaming right there, see, look, he's pointing at the camera, and there's all the audience together. I wanted to, I'm gonna come down here, I wanted to Facebook live this specific part of our meeting, because we have a special presentation to make, actually, a couple of them, and I wanted to come down here to address all of you guys, because this is really for y'all, not so much for council, but just wanna read you a quick, quick story. Alright. On Wednesday afternoon, March 15th, a 71-year-old patron at the Recreation Center reported to the front desk that he was having chest pains. Staff assisted the patron to a lobby chair as our aquatic coordinator Travis came to check on him. During some initial questions, the patron became unresponsive and was immediately lowered to the floor while other staff called 911. Upon finding no pulse, Travis began compressions as our head lifeguard Logan Mack performed rescue breathing. Staff also connected AED pads to the patron's chest, and the system called for a single shock. Following this, two or more sets of CPR were performed, and the patron began breathing on his own. Shortly thereafter, South Metro Fire arrived to transport the patron to the hospital, where he received treatment. The patron is now home, and recently returned to the Recreation Center to offer his appreciation to staff for their lifesaving efforts. Incredible job by our Parker staff. I wanted to also invite up South Metro Fire's Chief Bob Baker for a few words before we give recognition tonight. So Chief, would you come on down?
Sure.
And say hi to everyone in the Facebook world that's watching you come down. Chief Baker's like 18 feet tall, so, Lord is yours.
Great, thank you, this is my first time on Facebook, I have avoided it.
Good hands!
That's good, I've had three kids, and yes, three grandkids, I've avoided it. So, I just wanna say just a few words, just to thank the staff from the Parker Rec Center. I had received an email from the paramedic that was the first responder on this call from the fire department's standpoint, Medic 44, and I got the crew from Engine 44 back there, Kyle Hebert, Tom Hennessy, and Lieutenant Matt Brock. And so, it's not often that I receive an email from a crew just to recognize someone in, just in the public, and the town staff at the Rec Center just did a phenomenal job on this. First of all, identifying the problem quickly, and intervening very quickly. So, one of the things that's really important for a patient outcome when they have a heart attack, is from the time that they have the heart attack to the time that they're in the cath lab. And a national standard is like 90 minutes, 30 minutes is crazy good, and I think we were 20 or 25 minutes from the time of the incident to the cath lab, and that really made a significant difference, and that the staff at the Rec Center had the presence of mind to do what they did in a very professional manner, really made a difference in this person's outcome. And so, we're proud of the town and the town staff, and couldn't be prouder of the folks that work in Parker Rec, just high-quality people, so I just wanna say thank you.
Awesome.
And appreciation for a job well done, and keep up the great work.
Awesome, awesome. And Bob, would you mind standing up here and helping me present some of these words? So I'm gonna call up each of the members that were involved with this activity, and we've got a special recognition award, I'm gonna kinda go over and roll quick here for them, to show them how appreciative we are of their efforts to not only make Parker a better place in their role as employees at the Rec Department, but also showing that by quick activity and quick action and smarts and cool, calm heads, you were able to help keep one of our citizens around for a little bit longer. So, with that, I'm gonna invite you to come up, let's start with Travis. Travis, come on up. Please give him a round of applause. Travis, thank you very much. There's a reward, and put it around, just like it's the Olympics. Performing a triple diner in the, come on up here Travis, hang up here, because we're gonna do some pictures. Logan, come on over. Alright, great job, thank you. Right now, I know Logan's thinking, "Facebook, that's so 40-year-old." Alright, next up is Kimmy. Great job, thank you very much. Hillary, come on down. People probably see you out on the trail early in the morning, running like 800 miles. Alex, come down, Alex. And I'll make no comments, because Alex can beat me in arm wrestling. Sharon?
We can do this a lot here.
That's a lot of hair. We can fix that in two weeks.
No, that's my right side.
Alright, Chris. First time I met Andy, he was working one of the races, and you were, what do we call you, Globi?
Globi, yeah.
Yeah, he had the picture of the Parker Lights, he had a costume of the Parker Lights, it's really interesting, and he was Globi. Who do we have who's calling Millie Skinney? Can you hold his arms up? Alright, Diane. She's not here? Tim, come on down.
So Mayor, he could steal people from the town, but we already have a firefighter academy in the city. We're looking for 20 good men and women, so.
Can he legally say that here too? Bob, thank you very much, alright, I'm gonna go off Facebook Live, but let's do this first. Flip the camera this way, so we can get Bob, look, everyone behind us wave, everybody, because you guys are the real reason we're here tonight, thank you all very much for providing such good service to our citizens, and thank you all for watching. And we are done. Let's get a picture done with everybody, alright. No, get to there, there's more of those, yes.
We're gonna add two, so.
I don't think we'll fit.
One more.
Have you cleared?
You wanna jump in the back too? Whatever you want, here.
Yeah, alright.
Yeah, these modern cameras don't flash, but don't go in.
You're not facing the cheese.
One more.
Mayor, can I have one picture with the guys?
Absolutely, gentlemen, come on down!
For Cleveland, for you, that's everything. Push the envelope.
Now we're really gonna see that.
Now Scoot is gonna accent type, we're gonna tell guys behind.
Alex, stay where you're at.
One, two, three, cut.
One, two.
One more.
Cheeseburger.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, everyone! Thank you. Alright, next item on our agenda, well Randy, do we have any other presentations that I need to be aware of? Next item up is our Parker Chamber of Commerce update. Mr. Houston, come on down.
Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna keep this short, because I am now, I think, you hear me?
Yep.
I'm gonna keep this short, because it's a beautiful evening, and we all need to be outside here this evening to enjoy this nice spring day. Just a couple umbrella categories, some things we're focused on at the chamber recently, and certainly going forward. Been involved with a number of workforce initiative meetings over the last couple weeks, both on a local level and state level as well. As a matter of fact, we're part of our planning committee for our state chamber conference, the workforce is gonna be our primary theme for that whole conference, because it's a challenge that chambers of commerce and businesses in cities throughout Colorado are facing, so. Spent a lot of time on that, transportation and transportation funding, we're all reading a lot of things about that, we've been trying to work behind the scenes on some of those issues as well, and also continue on construction defect, because when you look at those big three areas of focus, transportation challenges, workforce challenges, and housing, and the cost of housing, they're all very much related to each other, and one depends on the other, one may cause the other, and so we're trying to attack those from all angles. From the visitor center perspective, we've been working on some, strengthening some statewide partnerships, so there's some exciting things coming down the road on that, be happy to share as those things become a reality here soon. And just a brief up in on Parker Days, things continue to really fall in line with that, even with the two-block expansion of the Parker Days footprint, all of the exhibits have been sold out, there's already a pretty lengthy waiting list for next year already, so the demand's there, people wanna be a part of Parker and a part of Parker Days. We actually have two interns that came on board with us this year to help with Parker Days, so we're excited to have them as well. I mentioned Clydesdales before, we're excited to have those guys come here, and we'll be working on three different events tied in with the Budweiser Clydesdales, to have them here during that week of Parker Days, and some business interaction, some, of course, there'll be the highlight of the parade this year, and then we'll be looking at some other things tied in with Parker Days as well. And last but not least, we went public with it, I think I mentioned it to you before, but today we officially announced that Midland will be our closing act on Saturday evening. If you're not familiar with the band, they've been identified as certainly one of the strong up-and-coming country acts in the nation. They're on tour with Willie Nelson this year, opening for him. Sirius XM Radio, their country list has them as number six on the charts this week with one of their songs, and so it's gonna be great to have a great act like that, and continue our partnership with KYGO for Parker Days. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Willie Nelson still touring? He was the first concert I ever saw in my life.
He likes Colorado.
Yeah, he likes Colorado now.
He looks the same as he did 30 years ago, he looked 80 years old 30 years ago.
Counsel, any questions for Dennis?
Thanks, Dennis.
Thanks, Dennis, appreciate it. Alright, next item on our agenda is public comment, this is an opportunity for you to come up and give comment to Town Council, so three-minute time limit, there's no action will be taken on these items, and these are, this is for general public comment, if you hear for an item that's on the agenda, there'll be public comment at that time for that specific item, so this is for things that are not on our agenda. So with that, we'll open up public comment at 7:15 PM, if there's anyone wishing to come up for public comment. This is the time. Bunch of high school girls came in at the end, are you guys here for public comment? Kinda, one struck her head, yes?
Definitely.
Yeah, which school, which school?
Chacrals.
Ms. Gaps class?
Oh, yeah.
Alright, well then we'll close public comment at 7:15, and we'll move on to reports, items, and comments from Mayor and Counsel. Mr. Diack.
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing I have is myself and a couple other council members, Councilmember Lewis and Holland attended the Billy Bob Thornton concert at the Pace Center. You probably did not know that he was a singer, but again, he was a pretty good one, and he had some great storytelling strewn throughout the concert, so kudos to the Pace Center for bringing him in, and looking forward to the next year and the season announcement, I think in late June, I don't know the date, but thank you.
Debbie.
As you know, I've been.
First off, Debbie, it's great to have you back.
Thank you. I wish I hadn't said that.
I'm sorry, sweetheart.
So, since I've been gone for so long, I really don't have anything to report, other than, as John said, I was an attendee at that concert.
Renee.
The only thing I did was I attended the Parker Chamber Lunch Bunch at 20 Mile Tap House.
Josh.
Let's see, the only thing I had was Senior Center Board Meeting, and I wanted to state that the Senior Center is always looking for friendly seniors, and if you're interested, they have new membership coffee at 10:00 AM on Fridays, and I told them I would say that, and very proud to say it, because it's a great group, my grandma was one of the founding charter members, and it's a good organization, so if you get a chance, go say hello, and they would love to have some company.
Ages?
55 and up, I believe.
55, alright. Amy?
Five more years.
I'm not saying that, that's a joke.
I know yours, I know yours. No, I have nothing to add tonight, thank you.
Josh, kinda stole my thunder, because I was gonna have us all sing Renee, Happy Birthday, and invite her to the senior, but Renee turns 55 this Wednesday, so please give her a big happy birthday! And then for me, the only thing I have is that we still need, and I'm looking at you high schoolers, we still need more heads to shave for our Shave the Mayor event at the end of the month on April 29th. Councilman Rivero, myself, will be shaving our heads and our beards. Mr. John Fusa, John, will you raise your hand, please? John will be shaving his head as well. Trying to look around the room to see if we have any other shavies in the room, or anyone else I could guilt into doing it. Yeah, Josh, he shaved his beard once a few years ago, and.
Kevin's gonna do it.
I didn't see him hiding back there.
Or serapis.
Or serapis. We do an event every year to raise money for pediatric cancer research called Shave the Mayor, it's a St. Baldry's event. Parker Venice Hospital donated $1,000 if I would dye my hair purple, and I am a Rockies fan, but the purple is for them, and so this year, our goal was to try to get 200 people to shave their heads, so we could raise money for the foundation, we're right, sitting at about 91 right now, so teenagers, high schoolers, we have a few more, I'll tell you this, there's another guy from Chaparral, Eric Walk, was his name, Eric Walker, or Eric, he has, like a reddish blonde Afro, big, he's shaving his head at the event, so sign up and be on Team Chaparral. I noticed the girls are like, "Yay!", and the two guys are like, "Uh-uh, I'm not shaving my head", but it's a great cause, at bare minimum, come see us on April 29th, or if you'd like, go to shavethemayor.com, and you can click on the "How Can I Help" link, and there's lots of ways to make donations to the event, but it's a great way to raise money and help donate, to help find a cure for pediatric cancer, so.
At their age, it's virtually guaranteed to grow back.
Yeah, exactly, see, that's why you should do it, see? I noticed that my little solar panel grows back slower and slower every year, this'll be the fifth year we're doing it, so it's a great event, so. Alright, with that, we'll move on to our Consent Agenda, this is item number six, Consent Agenda items are considered to be routine, will be enacted with one motion and one vote, unless a council member asks to have something removed for further discussion. So Counsel, with that, I would entertain a motion on Consent Agenda Items 6A through 6H.
So moved.
Second.
We've got a motion by Amy and a second by Josh Rivero, Counsel, please vote.
No, actually, I can't, I can't approve the April 3rd minutes.
You can just abstain.
Okay, motion passes with one abstention from Councilwoman Debbie Lewis. Next item is our Town Administrator's Report, Randy, do you have anything to add to your Town Administrator's Report?
I will just point out the fact that for tonight and for every meeting here on, we will have copies of the Town Administrator's Report.
Yes, fantastic.
Above, on the shelf up there for the public to read.
Mr. Cleveland is demonstrating it right there, and for everyone else in the audience, and for our Facebook Live friends, Town Administrator's Report is available anytime, 24/7, online at parkeronline.org. It's a great document to find current information, what developments are happening, statistics about the town, most questions can be answered by it, so definitely check it out. Alright, with that, we'll move on to item number eight, these are our public hearings, our first one is a Tax and Fee Assistance Agreement with Two Combs Enterprises Incorporated, and Matt, you're gonna lead us tonight.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, we bring for your consideration an application by Two Combs Enterprises to participate in the Town of Parker's Tax and Fee Assistance Program pursuant to Parker Municipal Code 4.02. Two Combs Enterprises is a family-owned business from the state of Missouri, which has a proven track record of successfully developing and managing lodging facilities. Two Combs Enterprises plans to develop a Spring Hill Suites by Marriott Limited Service Hotel in West Creek. The proposed hotel would consist of a four-story, 69,000-square-foot freestanding structure, and encompass a total of 108 rooms. Construction efforts are anticipated to begin in 2017, with an estimated core and shell valuation of approximately $8 million, and a total investment of approximately $20 million. The business projects employment of approximately 45 individuals upon completion, with an average annual salary of $30,000 to $35,000, and is projected to open in 2018. The Two Combs Project meets the following goals of the Town's Tax and Fee Assistance Program, in that it creates new jobs, it creates new sales tax, and it contributes to the diversity of jobs and employment opportunities within the Town of Parker. The proposed tap agreement with Two Combs Enterprises will include a 50% rebate of building permit fees and construction use taxes, a rebate of 50% of sales taxes, excluding lodging taxes for a period of not to exceed five years, and a combined maximum rebate of all fees and taxes that shall not exceed $275,000. The applicant's representative is here tonight, Jody has joined us and wanted to say a few words, and then I can answer any questions you might have.
Jody? Before, Jody, come on up, but before we get you started, Counsel, do you have any questions for Matt, before we give?
Not just yet.
Alright, Jody, if you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the Town Board. I am Jody Newton with Masterworks LLC, address 360 East Happy Canyon Road in Caserock, Colorado, Douglas County still. I'm the project manager, working on behalf of Next Gen West Creek Holdings, which is the land developer of the entire, and owner of the entire development of West Creek, and then also project manager for the Two Combs and the Spring Hill Suites Hotel. So, we're very excited to have this opportunity tonight, we've worked very hard to bring in new development, particularly to West Creek, it was a property that had fallen into foreclosure several years ago, and we've worked very closely with staff, and Matt has been great, so the Spring Hill Suites Hotel will be the first development that we've brought in since that acquiring by Next Gen Properties, which took it out of foreclosure. So, anyway, we're very excited to be here, Two Combs is looking to develop all over the Colorado Front Range, and they've picked Parker as their first location, so I'm really excited to have them, and I think you'll see that they're a top-notch, they're in top-notch businesses, obviously, they have to maintain the Marriott standards, but they personally take this on as a real endeavor, and I think they'll be a good community, in addition to your community, so appreciate the opportunity.
Judy, thank you very much. Counsel, questions?
I don't think so.
No? No? Alright, thank you very much. Since this is a public hearing, or Matt, did you have anything else to add?
Just if there's any questions from the Counsel. No, I think we stated in the condition precedent to be satisfied that, you know, this will be a Spring Hill by Marriott, and if that changes, then this Tax and Fee Assistance Program is null and void, and we'll start over. That is correct, that is the way the agreement actually reads.
Perfect. Okay, since this is a public hearing, we'll open it up for public comment at 7:25 PM, if there's anyone here to address Counsel on this item. Seeing none, we'll close public comment at 7:25 PM, and Counsel, I'll entertain further discussion or a motion, please.
I move to approve the Tax and Fee Program Assistance Agreement for Two Combs Enterprises, Inc.
Second.
We have a motion by John Diack and a second by Josh Martin, Counsel, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item on our agenda is.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is item number nine, this is ordinance number 3.324.1 on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance to amend Section 13.09.020 D9 and 13.09.090 of the Parker Municipal Code concerning signs displayed on motor vehicles and planned sign program. Bryce, you're gonna rock and roll for us?
Thank you, Mayor, members of Counsel, as noted before you tonight is an ordinance to amend the sign code. Planned sign programs are site-specific sign plans that allow for increased creativity and flexibility. The current code requires all multi-tenant commercial buildings with over seven tenants to have a PSP or planned sign program. Not all multi-tenant buildings want the added creativity and flexibility allowed through the PSP for their signage. This proposal would remove the tenant number requirement and make PSPs optional for all businesses and commercial centers. The proposed change to the code will shorten the time and effort required for businesses in these centers without a PSP, where the tenant simply proposes to meet the sign code without reallocating sign area or establishing additional standards. Also included in this amendment is a proposal regarding vehicle signs. Vehicles with signage must currently leave the premises on a regular basis and may not be parked in excess of 12 hours. The current code, though, is not clear regarding where the vehicles can park. This proposal clarifies that vehicles with signage must be parked within 150 feet of the business while they are meeting this standard. Planning Commission held a public meeting regarding the proposed changes on April 13th, 2017. Staff and the Planning Commission recommend that Town Council approve ordinance 3.324.1, amending the land development ordinance regarding the Town of Parker sign code. As always, I'm available for any questions you may have.
Counsel, any questions for Bryce?
No.
No? Alright, we'll open it up for public comment at 7:27 PM, if there's anyone here to address Counsel on this item. Seeing none, we'll close public comment at 7:28, and I'll entertain further discussion or a motion, please.
I move to approve ordinance number 3.324.1 on second reading.
Second.
Motion by Josh Rivero, second by Amy, Counsel, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is item number 10, this is ordinance number 9.243.1 on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance approving the First Amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement between the Town of Parker, Colorado, and the Overlook Metropolitan District. Mr. Jim Maloney Esquire will be leading us tonight.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel, this item before you tonight is an ordinance to approve a First Amendment to an intergovernmental agreement between the Town and the Overlook Metropolitan District. Because it does involve an intergovernmental agreement, the charter requires that it has to be approved by ordinance. By way of background, the Town Council approved the service plan for this metropolitan district on September 2nd of 2015, and then subsequently, the Town Council on August 3rd, 2015, approved the intergovernmental agreement. In both the service plan and in the intergovernmental agreement, there was a debt limit of $5,180,000 for the construction of public improvements. Since your approval of those two documents, the developer actually went out and had bids on some of the public improvements, the bids came in much higher, my understanding is that the increase is due to storm sewer. My understanding is that the increase is due to storm sewer improvements, meter pits, and soft costs. So the increase, at least in the debt limit contained in your First Amendment to the intergovernmental agreement, would be an increase from $5,180,000 to $7,130,000. We have reviewed the application and the accompanying documents, it would recommend approval. Paula Williams, who's the legal counsel for the metropolitan district, is here this evening and would probably like to offer some comment.
Okay. Paula, before you, go ahead and come on up, but before we get to, council, any questions for Jim?
Not for Jim.
Nope? All right. Come on down. If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Paula Williams, McGee De Becker, 450 East 17th Avenue, Suite 400, Denver, Colorado, 80203. Thank you, and thank you to Mr. Maloney and Mr. Light. This council had the opportunity to hear our request for an amendment to the service plan two weeks ago, and council approved it at that time. So this is the second reading on the amendment to the IGA. And while we're seeking additional debt authority, we are not changing the maximum amount of the mill levy that can be imposed, nor are we seeking to extend the maximum term that debt can be imposed. So we believe that there are protections for homeowners in place, and we respectfully request that you approve our IGA amendment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Council, any questions for Paula?
I just made a statement, I did notice that the mill levy stayed the same and then the overall, so it's definitely important not to encumber those further, those future citizens with more debt for the infrastructure and hopefully to keep those soft costs nice and soft.
Exactly. Thank you.
Okay. Since this is a public hearing, we'll open it up at 7:31 PM if there's anyone here to address council. Seeing none, we'll close public comment at 7:31 PM, and I'll entertain further discussion or a motion, please.
I move to approve ordinance number 9.243.1 on second reading.
Second.
Motion by Josh Rivero and a second by Josh Martin. Council, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. With no further business before council, we will adjourn at 7:32 PM. But hey, don't run out teens, because I know Ms. Gapp is going to want you to stay for our next item, which is our Parker Authority for Reinvestment Meeting, which starts in about 120 seconds. So you're not allowed to leave or else I'm going to tell you.